Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with everty and ever.
Justice.
Wrong. So I wasn't on the ball enough to print off the agenda, so if you could work through that, please.
All right, so sure, this is Kristin. Addition or deletion of agenda items, none were submitted to the select board prior to the meeting. Not sure if anybody else on the board has any additions or deletions.
I do have, this is. I do have a comment about the e-news and website position.
Okay.
Sometime.
Okay, rolling right along.
Introduction of those present by the chairperson.
Okay, Mike Beecher, Kristin Powers, are we still Kristin Powers or?
Kristin, Kristin Powers bowling now.
Excellent, thank you. Chuck?
Yes.
John Malcolm?
Yes.
There's Frank, there's Ann and Julie and Bob Jones.
Yes.
Next up, we have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, which was June 16th, 2020. And this is Kristin, one correction that Keith Mason's name was left off of the attendance list. I had the pleasure of not properly saving the minutes from the last meeting, so I got to enjoy listening to the meeting recording again and re-recording the minutes. So I think I caught everything, but just if there's anything that I missed, it's possible, so.
Everything looked in order to me. Did anybody see anything that they didn't agree with or?
No, I think they were fine.
Okay, that sounds like a motion from Chuck. Can I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
John, a second? Any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, approved.
Okay, next item, pre-requested appearances by local citizens and visitors, of which there were none. Next item is announcements, none from myself. Anybody else have any announcements?
None that I know of.
All right, next item is reports. First, we have the zoning administrators' report, of which I was not submitted anything formally. So next report is the planning commission's report.
Okay, our next, this is Harry. Our next planning commission meeting will be on the 27th of July, the usual fourth Monday. And again, it's going to be a Zoom meeting, just as this is. At our June 22nd meeting, which was last Monday, our first item, we confirmed the elections, as I said at your last meeting, that I would, we would do that at the planning commission. We would reconfirm the elections of the officers of the planning commission, with myself as chairman, Tom Collard as vice chairman, and Rick Sassa as secretary. Item two was revisions to our zoning permit application, which I had forwarded to Kristin and also to, I think it went to all of you guys, you might have gotten it twice because I didn't think it went the first time, so I resent it just in case. And I spoke to Merrill Bent, the town attorney, as you requested, and reviewed the draft of the revised zoning permit application that was prepared by Jonas Rosenthal with the advice of the PPC. And she agreed with the format and revision suggested to the information to be included in the changes. And she, she agreed with the changes that we had made. The draft of the revision was reviewed with Jonas and the commissioners at the June 22nd monthly public meeting and unanimously approved by the commissioners present for submission to the select board. So as you saw, I did submit it to the select board and we're respectfully requesting the select board approval so that the zoning administrator can begin using their revised application. We continue to fine-tune it a little bit, but that's the basic format. We'd like your approval of. You may notice on what I sent you, there was, there were three pages of instructions and general information, including a fee schedule, the permit fee schedule. And there was an example of how to do a sketch plan. So, you know, we have not had good luck with getting good examples of sketch plans from applicants, so we've, we will have a sketch to show them. We haven't gotten the sketch completed yet, so it's not in the instructions, but we will get it into the instructions. But the, the format of the zoning application is there. We will have it as a PDF format that people can download directly from the website so that they don't have to go into the town hall in order to get a copy. I'm working on a format for doing a fillable PDF so people can bring it up on the website, fill it in on the website, so it's a, it'll be a typed copy, and they can submit it directly from their computer to the website. So we're still working on that, but that's the format that we'd like you to approve. Let me finish the last item and then I'd like to see what you, what your feeling is on, on the approval. We worked on revisions to the unified bylaws specific to conditional uses. The commissioners present at the June 22nd meeting reviewed a list of conditional uses, which as of the last update of the unified bylaws in 2017 had not been defined and to which conditions for use in various zoning districts were unstated or not clear. Jonas presented examples of conditional use definitions from several other town bylaws from towns within the neighboring, within or neighboring the Rutland Regional Planning District to be used as reference by the commissioners. Each commissioner and Jonas was assigned two conditions, two conditional uses to further research and draft conditional use language for review at the next PPC public meeting on July 25th. So we continue to work, work our way through the conditional uses. So that's the end of my report. I'll leave it up to you guys to review the zoning application then and hopefully approve it for us.
Did everybody get a chance to review that zoning application? Chuck, did you?
Yes, sir.
And John?
Yes.
Bob, did you?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Harry about it?
I would make a motion to accept the zoning form as printed with the addition of a sketch plan.
Okay, thank you. Chuck made that motion. Do I hear a second?
John will second it.
John will second that motion. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Harry, and thank Jonas.
Thank you. Will do.
Seems like a much more comprehensive form, and I think it'll be a lot better all the way around.
I think so.
Okay, next.
Anything else, Harry, or?
No, that's it for me.
Excellent, we're moving right along then, Kristin.
Okay, so this is Kristin, the next item is the road foreman's report. I sent you.
One second. I just got a text from Keith, said he'd call in at 7:30.
Okay.
So what have you got, 15, 15 more minutes? And then he said he would call in, so then maybe we should just kind of hang on that.
If you'd like, I can just go through what Keith sent so that way you know what he's going to be referring to, and then when he calls on, you might be able to then directly ask him some questions? Or would you rather just wait?
No, that would be fine, and I think that would be fine to go over that.
Okay. So reports submitted by Keith. Number one, need to confirm with Fred Stone about mowing the landfill. Number two, roadside mowing is complete. Number three, the 410 Baco is back from over tracks but needs to go back because the problem is not fixed. Number four, anticipated start on Switch Road is next week. Number five, still finishing on Betts Bridge Prep. Most tree work is complete but still have culvert installations to do. And lastly, number six, when the Baco was down, we switched to ditch cleaning in areas that we could use the loader, including Switch Road, Betts Bridge, and Bauer Road.
Okay, so when he calls back, we'll get a little bit more information on the Baco. And then I guess the first thing, would somebody like to make the motion that we hire Fred Stone to, to do the landfill mowing like he has in the past? I forget.
John will make that motion.
Okay, I forget, his price is quite reasonable and he gets in and does a good job. And does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second that. No, this is Bob.
Bob will second the motion. All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll tell Keith to talk with Fred about mowing it when he can.
Okay.
I noticed that he didn't, this is Chuck.
Yeah.
I noticed that Keith didn't mention anything about the additional paving bids that were requested. So maybe he'll talk about that when he talks to us around 7:30.
Yeah, I believe he has an update on that, I'm sure, so. Do we want to skip right along, Kristin, and then we'll come back to Keith, is ready?
Sure, so the next item, this is Kristin. The next item is the assessors' report, of which I was not submitted anything formally this evening. Next item, or sorry, before I skip over that, did anybody have anything from their assessors' office they wanted to report on?
There was a conversation, I guess we got sent, but apparently they did not want to appear tonight about the Hewlett Farm and a conversation between their forester, current use, and their plot. But I haven't, obviously, it's still, I don't know what the reason they sent us that, just to make us aware of the situation, I guess.
It looked, from what I, the way I understood it, John, that's going to have to go to a BCA meeting?
Okay.
That's just what I'm asking you, that is a question. Do you feel the same way or?
Well, I don't know how the regulations work on, you know, old, old situations and whether there was a incorrect finding that they could correct for 2020, but not for the past year. But I, it'll take more investigation to see. There was no cover letter to it from Steve Hamfield, the forester. All it was, was copying that conversation.
Right, I saw that also, and, but yeah, there will have to be something addressed to the select board and, and then we'll have to determine what the correct course of action will be.
Yes.
Moving right along then.
So this is Kristin. Next up is the town clerk's memo. We have a memo submitted by our town clerk, Deb Hawkins. First bullet reads, "I received a concern from a citizen who lives on Route 30 near the town gravel pit with regard to a neighbor, quote, 'flying his non-manned aircraft on my property and over my house. He has lost control of them and crashed several times on my property. I have asked him to keep them off my property and away from my house, and he is not responding, not respecting my request,' end quote. This citizen is concerned for the safety of her family, children, and animals. It is a small airplane, according to her. Apparently, he is a member of the AMA and with the assistance of Bill Humphries, found the following two criteria of being a member. Criteria, item one, privacy. It's important that you respect the privacy and property of others and be aware of your surroundings. What might seem like a cool flight path to you may be a nuisance or perceived as invasion of privacy by others. Item two, be aware of no-fly zones. Do not fly near stadiums, critical infrastructure, including correctional facilities, water treatment centers, utilities, et cetera, large open-air events, or any time or place where model aircraft operations are prohibited." So additionally, she was concerned about the flight path over the town pit on Route 30. On Bill Humphries' recommendation, she has sent a no trespassing order, but also wondered about the pit falling under a no, under the no-fly zone. She wanted the select board to be aware of the situation. Bullet number two, "We are busy gearing up for the primary election and setting up a safe voting protocol. I will give you all a copy when it is finalized. We have ballots, but we are still awaiting the envelopes from the SOS office. We have also received the necessary PPE for poll workers for the primary." Bullet three, "Appointment system is working well and we are meeting the needs of researchers and local citizens." Bullet four, "Have a wonderful evening. Stay home, stay safe, stay healthy. Respectfully submitted, Deb."
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions regarding that statement from Deb? I guess not, hearing none, we'll go on to Julie.
Mike?
Yes, Bob.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about the unmanned aircraft. It's the first I really heard of it, but my only concern would be the high-tension power lines that do run through the gravel pit, and it states on there that they're not supposed to fly near any, any power lines or anything like that. If they were to hit those power lines, it could, could be a catastrophe, I guess. I'm not sure if we need to get involved with that or not.
Okay, I, I agree with that, but it, it sounds like it's, it's more under the terms if the guy is a member of that type of, of club or organization, he must be familiar with that and knows the rules, and it sounds more like a, like a police type of matter than, than anything else. If we noticed any damage to our property, I would think our first course of action would be to call the police on him or, and then go from there.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, Julie.
Okay, I have two warrants. I think I sent them both. John mentioned not receiving the payroll warrant. I think it was in the same email as the other one. Did, I don't know if everyone got, if everyone else got them.
I did see it, it was in the second. There was two attachments in the first one that you sent out, and then you sent a revised one with Lisa Wright's.
Right.
Bill included, yeah, okay.
Okay. Payroll for the week was $94.39.52. Counts payable was $51.168.46. John, I can resend you the payroll warrant if you want it after the meeting, too.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Monies from the general fund were $33.694.54. The highway was $22.041.78. Wastewater was $48.71.66. Were there any questions about the warrants?
I did not see anything that I questioned. The wastewater one was for those, was for Ferguson, right? For some manholes and some risers and stuff that was necessary to, that was at $4,000 worth of?
It was the VTOMs, and I may need to move some things around. Because I didn't know what Ferguson's was for entirely, if it was part of the covers that went on the highway or if it was covers for the wastewater. So I will, I'll send you, Mike, copies of those bills tomorrow.
Okay, I'll have to get with Keith, but I would suspect.
I'll send both, both of you copies.
Okay, that would be best, thank you.
Sure. But it was VTOMs and their portion of like phone and internet, I think.
Okay.
And then the only other thing, so we needed to act on the propane contracts. And I did get, I got your email, John, and I think I sent the Blue Flame separately quite a while ago, but I was able to find it, and the quotes for propane from them for the garage was $2.18. And for the wastewater, it was $1.97.
Thank you.
Sure.
So it looked like me in those quotes, that it was kind of, Suburban was the lowest, right? I don't have them in front of me, but.
I don't think they were. I think it was Irving. Irving.
Irving, okay, Irving was the lowest, okay. Does anybody have any reason why we shouldn't go with Irving or?
Chuck speaking. Was that the $1.39? Refresh my memory.
I believe so.
Yes.
$1.39. I guess that makes pretty good sense to accept a bit of Irving, and that's the one that needed to be signed tonight. Julie, is that?
Pretty much everyone had like a, this is our price right now and we will hold it for seven days or something like that. So they didn't actually send a contract, they sent a quote and then said that if we wanted to go with them, they would send a contract. So if you wanted to go with them, I would just contact the woman that put together the quote. And, oh, and FYI, Irving has someone that specifically works with municipalities that sent that quote, so that's also kind of a positive in that regard.
And they're aware that there's two separate stops?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that we would need a tank, we would need a tank at the garage.
Okay. So it, it certainly sounds to me, like, it sounds to me like Chuck, you just made a motion to go with Irving?
Yes, that would be my motion.
Okay, do I hear a second on that motion? Do I hear a second then?
I'll second that motion.
John, John will second that motion. Is there any more discussion?
I do have a question. Do they have a, are we aware of service availability?
I'm sorry, what?
Are we aware of what their service availability is?
Oh, for servicing?
Yes.
Everything I got from them, I sent to you, and I don't remember them having, Suburbans was like the most detailed quote. Door and Irving just kind of sent dollar figures, as I recall.
Okay.
Well, we could.
Randy, Randy Panutik used to work for Irving and did my work, and I was just wondering.
I would suspect that they all must have a qualified service team, especially somebody as big as Irving.
Okay.
So do we want to vote? We can get the contract. And if you could, Julie, if you could ask when you reach out to get the contract about their service, just give us a little information on, on their available service. Should we have an emergency, we need it.
Okay, I was just trying to pull up the email that I sent to you, since we're Zooming. I'm just scrolling through. Yeah, all they sent me was that one email with a quote letter and really doesn't look like they talk too much about service. So I will ask about that and I'll get a contract from them. Do you think that you should authorize me to sign the contract on your behalf?
I don't see why not. We've, we've just made a motion. As long as, as nothing changes with the prices, I think it would be fine that Julie signed the contract. What do the rest of you think?
I'm good with it.
Okay, John? Chuck's good.
Yes.
Bobby?
I can send it to one of you guys if you want.
Yes.
We're all good.
Okay. Okay, and ask about service. Okay, next up.
Did we vote on that? We didn't, we, we have a motion, a motion in a second on the floor to switch to Irving, but we didn't vote on it yet. Chuck?
Yes.
John, are you in favor?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, motion, we'll switch to Irving. Okay, and next, Julie, thank you.
Sure, I, so I had emailed you all the preliminary calculations for wastewater rates. It's in an Excel file and an email that I sent to you. And I don't want to do them tonight, but I was just hoping that if I sent them to you ahead of time, maybe we could plan on doing them at the next meeting.
Okay.
And I was, my thought being that the sooner we get them, then the sooner we can start the collections for staggering them, because last year we did four payments, but we weren't able to give people the full three months because I wanted to do the final collection during our fiscal year. So if we got them done in time to start collecting, either, either we could switch from the 10th, which is generally what we do, and do a late August collection, or we could stick with the 10th and do September, December, March, and June. But I'm open to thoughts and suggestions.
Okay. I guess it seems like December. When would be the December one, the 10th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, that gives you two weeks to buy me presents, right? Okay.
It's a valid, it's a valid point, something real to consider, yeah, very thoughtful.
That's exactly what I was thinking, that, you know, I don't want to try and cram it in people's faces that close to that. It might be nicer if we could, if we could roll it back, like so that they have to get a chicken instead of a turkey or something like that. But.
Well, if we did, if we did like a late, if we did a mid-August, like if we moved the date to like the 15th or the 20th, then we, we could do, so it would be August, November, April, and, right? No, not April, February.
February.
Going in the wrong direction.
I'm like, uh-huh.
And May. And May.
So you're tentatively figuring on four payments, Julie?
That's what we did last year, because we had raised the rates significantly. And I'd be willing to still do that, but that's up to you guys, if you want to, if you want to eliminate that. I think it helped a lot of people.
I, I think it's an easier pill to swallow. I mean, especially because the rates are going to creep up a little bit again this year, too, this time, too. So yeah, I think, I'd like to see you stick with the four, four payments. What about the rest of you guys? Chuck, are you okay with that?
Well, this is all, we're all thinking, too, so...
Okay, so we don't have to figure it out till then. Till we, maybe next week, we can, next meeting, we can handle that. Okay, that'd be good.
So feel free to email me or call me with any thoughts or suggestions. And then the next step is also wastewater related. Regarding the emergency call at the wastewater plant that was COVID-related, I didn't know if there'd have been any follow-up on the claim. I had included it on my COVID-related expenses spreadsheet, and Bob Morino said that he reached out to Vermont Emergency Management, and they suggested it go through our insurance first, and then FEMA would probably cover it if necessary.
Okay. I did see that email. Did... Who is, do we have the one agent, Kristen, that handles all of our insurance needs? Or that we reached out to during the car accident? Yes.
Oh, um, yes, I believe so.
Okay. Would you be able to get with Julie and check with that agent and see if that turns into this COVID-related sewer problem? If that's anything that the insurance covers, or do we need to go in a different direction?
Yeah. I, I know. I was a little, this is Kristen, I was a little confused by that as well, because I thought anything COVID-related was going through emergency management.
Yeah, I thought, maybe...
I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy to reach out. I just, I'll do some...
Or possibly you can reach out to Jill and see if she knows the different, the right agency to apply it to. She may have encountered this with some of her other areas that she works.
Okay. So we'll talk to Jill first, and then we'll talk to BLCT.
Yeah, I think that's a, a good direction.
Okay. So I had, in my seven approximately emails to you guys in the last two days, had promised that my most recent communication with Vermont was that they were planning now to set the education rates on time, which would be tomorrow. Since that email this afternoon, that has changed. And now they think maybe the tenth. So I'm still, I'm not going to hold my breath that we are going to be able to get our tax bills printed on time without a special meeting. But there's still a chance, and if we hope and pray hard enough, it still won't happen.
So as soon as, as soon as you can get the numbers down, let us know, and we'll do what we need to do to get the tax bills rolling.
Okay.
Boy, she is quite a comedian, isn't she?
I really missed my calling.
We gotta smile about it. There's really no other options.
Yep.
Now, the legislature passed seven, or three cents on both the residential and non-residential, and sent it to the governor. Now, he still has to sign it, correct?
I don't know. I think you know even more than I do, John. I just, it changes so often that I sort of just threw my hands up a while ago and said, I'll find out when I find out.
Because I put three...
I tried to look it up for you.
Okay. I, I just wondered, you know? Because I put, I took my last year's tax bill and added three cents, and it was several cents lower than what they, at least was expressed in a BT Digger article describing the legislative action. But we'll see how it settles out.
I can tell you from my, from my school board, with my school board hat on, that that we and every other school in the BRS, in Taconic and Green, and at the BRSU level, there have been some, some clawbacks that haven't been mandated, but that have just been instituted just forward-thinking. And so there have been positions that have been eliminated without people losing their jobs, but just to save some money. So it is on the mind of every district that we're going to have to start cutting corners pretty sharply.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. And that's all for me.
Okay, so we, Kristen?
What about the letter?
So last, at the last meeting, you'd asked me to put that wastewater request for waiver of penalties and interest. And I just don't, I don't think, I didn't go to the meeting, and I don't think I heard anything about whether or not that was addressed.
Right. This is Kristen. To jog your memory, there is an individual that requested an abatement, and the board decided to not handle it as the select board and have said individual write a letter to the Board of Abatement, and Julie drafted the letter, and you wanted to approve it as a board. And so Julie sent you guys all a draft of the letter. It was before the last meeting, and it just never got discussed. But, Mike, it was sent to you, and you felt like you wanted the board to see it instead of you just to say yes.
And I, I believe I shared it, but I can't...
We, yeah, I forwarded it to the rest of...
Everybody, everybody had it.
In essence, it was a very well-written letter from Julie saying that the next best step would be to reach out to the Board of Abatement for this issue. Right?
So do you, the rest of you guys remember that letter?
Yes, and we did have a motion to agree with them, but it never got a second, so we did not act on it.
Right. So basically, basically, we're, I think we're, this is a mountain out of a molehill conversation. Basically, Julie was writing him a letter saying that the select board was not handling the issue, and that he needed to go down the traditional avenue to the Board of Abatement. And it's just an approval for Julie to send him the letter, I think, is what we need.
And I, I felt the letter was, was well-written and accurate, and that she should just send it. The rest of you guys think the same thing? Did you feel that letter was, was correct, John, and the details, and that steered, steered the the taxpayer in the right direction?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
Okay. What about you other guys?
This is Bob. That's me.
I just came back to the room. I had to step out, but I missed part of it. But John's, John's a man of intelligence, and if he says it's cool, then I'm good with it.
All right, then. Send the letter. Thank you very much. Now, the warrants, we didn't approve the warrants. Yeah.
All right. I have, can I speak on one of the items?
Yes, please.
You saw, I'm pretty sure that you all saw the Hubbard bill?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure that we must have paid a item-type rate when they searched through everything in that dumpster, the tires and whatever, whatever else. But I sure hope we don't get in that situation again.
Ed did call me, because he found, he found out about that bill, and he said, I was, I was sure it was going to be much less than that. And my experience with just having a dumpster not too long ago is that's about right on track for how much a thirty-yard dumpster costs to get rid of. By the time you pay probably three hundred dollars just to truck it, and then eighty-five dollars a ton, it's, it's probably right on. And like you say, Chuck, if they found some items, then they had to, to sort out a little bit, too. It pushes the price up fast. It's, it's a, I'm just, I'm glad, I'm relieved it had to get done, and I'm relieved it's done. But like you say, Chuck, we want to be really careful about what goes in that dumpster.
I mean, I'm, we have to pay the bill, and I just, I'm pretty sure that they sorted through it, and we paid, paid a little more because of what was in it. But I know roll-offs aren't cheap, so that's, can we, well, Julie just asked, we put a lock on the dumpster, but actually, that dumpster right now is still upright behind the sand pile. So I mean, people, if they see it, they still can throw stuff at it. I thought we were gonna keep it upside down.
We need to make sure it's in a more controlled, controlled access. Absolutely.
Yes.
So, thank you, Chuck.
You're welcome.
So other than that, are you interested in making a motion to approve the warrants, Chuck?
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the warrants as printed.
Thank you. Do I hear a second on that?
John will second that.
I feel like an auctioneer here.
If you remember, I made the motion. I didn't get a second one time.
So John seconded. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Are you all set, Julie? Anything more to share? You're good.
I have one question about the financial questionnaire.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Financial management. I was, I agreed with what you said in the response on the email. I was wondering if you could look them over, and we could package ones that do one, two, or three, or four, or whatever, package them so we could get done maybe in three months or something. Do a package each month for three months, and some are going to be controversial, some aren't.
That sounds like a great idea.
Sprinkle a little bit of controversy out so that we have good ratings.
Yes, indeed. Bring one smoking gun every time.
I can do that. I guess that's the end of my set, and the tip jar is on the bar.
Excellent. Excellent.
Have a good night, Julie.
Thank you. Keith has joined us, so Keith, you can elaborate on some of the activities going on, please.
Okay, I assume Kristen forwarded you the list I sent her, but...
Right, and we read through it.
Okay. First thing is Fred Stone is looking for confirmation that he's to mow on the landfill, which I assume that...
And he got it tonight, so you can tell him to go ahead and mow it.
All right. Or Bob can. Are you going to see him, Bob?
I will let him know.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, our backhoe went over last week. Came home over the weekend, and we ran it for about three hours Monday morning, and it was doing the same thing that it had before it went over there. So it has got to go back over there. They had sent a technician over, and he looked it over, and he checked a few things out and said that it's got to be internal. It's forcing oil from the hydraulic oil into the transaxle and the brake, so it overfills the rear compartment, and that's why it gets, it's had a hundred and fifty-seven brake codes in it when he got there. So about every time you stepped on the pedal, apparently, it was sending something. So, so Bob, you can put that on your list of things to do, too, if you want. We'll get it back over there, and we'll have to argue with them again over our, our payment options, I guess. But we have not got a bill on it yet that I'm aware of. And, but whatever they did, didn't last, so it's got to go back.
Okay, I guess we'll, we'll run the way back and forth over there.
Yeah. So that's the story on that. Help me out, Kristen. I'm drawing a blank. I don't have my list in front of me here.
All right. You also talked about, oh, do you remember?
Well, starting on the Switch Road next week, we're going to be working with, with Peter Pedro's company's going to deliver right to us. So we'll start putting the rock down over there. We aren't quite complete on the Betts Bridge Road yet, but we're working on that. It's a lot of tree work there that we've been working on this week, but we really kind of needed our backhoe to help us out with that. While the backhoe was out of commission, we did some ditch cleaning and stuff where we could operate with the, with the loader. So we really just got going on the Betts Bridge Road again this week, and that's where we've been all week. So yesterday and today, anyway. So we'll finish that up. We still got some culverts to change on Betts Bridge Road, and we'll work that in. But we've, we've got to, got to make hay while the sun shines when they're ready to cooperate with us over on the Switch Road. So I'm probably going to, we probably will come back towards Briar Hill and start back through to start with, and then do to the New York line the very end, which, which that's going to be right at the end of their road. So we'll try to keep, keep our road open and smooth and not run on what we're putting down. So we'll do the long stretch first.
Okay.
And it's just smoother to travel on, you know? We'll get right back and forth pretty quickly. So it's a little, we noticed when we do that rock that we do it a little bit different. Normally, you build your road in and drive on it as you go, but it seems to work better if we drive on the existing road and...
Work away from our rock pile.
Work away from our rock that we're applying, so. So that's, that's the plan. We'll be starting there. And then, you know, when we go to Betts Bridge Road, we'll have to regroup, and it'll work something different out, because they won't, they won't be trucking over there. But while we are on the Switch Road, and they're running with the, with the pit trucks on it, we're, I'm probably going to close the road at least through our work schedule, and open it overnight. But we'll, we will keep the traffic off it when those guys are coming back and forth. And then, then we won't run into any issues on a closed road.
That's a great idea.
I'll, you know, I'll notify county control and all of that stuff and let them know that it is passable and for emergency access if they need it, but it will be officially closed to through traffic, so. And the guys that are out there, I've already talked to, and they'll go one way or the other, whichever doesn't mess us up. So, you know, the guys in the middle that have no choice but to travel there, so.
So who's dozer you got a hold of?
I have not got a dozer yet, Chuck. I've got a couple of phone calls in, but I haven't got a confirmation yet, so.
You also just said that you did some ditch cleaning when the backhoe was down?
Yes. That's what we, we did, would we use the loader where we could. Switch Road, Betts Bridge Road, up Bauer Road, we just a few spots there, we thought we could. We may have to go back and dress some of them up with a backhoe, but we got rid of the bulk of the material and just was something too productive we could do while we were without our backhoe. That's what it was, so. Roadside mowing is complete.
Yes, that was what I was just going to add for you, too. I actually, Keith, this is Kristen, quick question. Do you know about the schedule for the Route 30 roadside mowing, or? Um, quick question. Do you know about the schedule for the Route Thirty roadside mowing or you don't have much?
I do not know anything about it other than that Dave Hozley is not doing it this year.
Okay.
So quite often he has that contract and he has done hours and then started at the Granville Line and worked his way south for the state, but he, he didn't contract anything with the state this year. If you remember, he was questionable whether he's even gonna do hours, but he's doing a bunch of towns that he does, but he hasn't contracted with the state and I mean, I can find that out if necessary, but I don't, I don't currently know.
It was more just, uh, I like to go walking and the parsnip is really bad right on the shoulder, so it's hard when traffic is coming. You can't get off.
We're getting, getting feedback from the bicycles too, because it's now hanging on the edge of the road and if they pull over and, uh, is, uh, you know, they're brushing into the weeds and stuff, so people would like it mowed. It's, it's time, you know, the you can't see the roadsides. There's always deer out and about and it's just, it's time to have them mowed. I have no idea whether it's COVID related or anything, so.
Yeah, it's definitely becoming, I mean, being a Route Thirty, uh, resident, it's becoming a bit like scary to pull out of my driveway even because I can't see beyond the, the grass, so. Just curious if you knew anything, but thank you for
I, I will find out and get you some feedback.
Thanks.
And then I'll know anyway because people are asking me and I'm telling them the same thing I'm telling you. I don't know at this time what the plan is, so.
Well, thank you for looking into that.
Can you cover everything on the sheet there Kristen?
Yeah, that's everything.
Okay, now Keith, you wanna bring us up?
Thing I have. Go ahead Mike, I talked over you.
The black top repairs by Charlie P Q's and Delores's?
Contacted Tom Fuller, yes. And he's, we're on his list and I'll probably hear, I probably won't know Mike until a day or two ahead of time, so. Um, so I don't have an exact time on it yet, but we are on the list and, and ready to go when when it falls into his schedule, which he knows we're eager to get it done, so I think he'll accommodate us, so.
Okay, so to bring Chuck up to, can you bring Chuck up to speed on that? Because he didn't get all that conversation that you and I had and then Bob and John.
Oh, well, it was just that, uh, we you know, we wanted a comparative price and when I contacted the other company, they weren't even real eager to talk about it. They thought uh, you know, I didn't give them what we had for a price. I told them we had a price and we were looking for a comparison and, and they were not real eager. They're not do not have a bunch of work in the area. Their mobilization costs would be high and they didn't feel that they could throw us a competitive price, so, um. I, uh, like Tommy Wilson said afterwards, if I'd have contacted Peckham or something, they may have thrown me a price, but, uh, I doubt they're gonna pull off one forty-nine over there to come over and do a little project for us too. So I, I just felt that unless we're gonna leave that all summer, we better get on somebody's list and go and and we had what I felt was a about as fair a price as we were gonna get from anybody to, to do that kind of work, so. We, uh, we abandoned getting the comparison price, so.
Yeah, I would appreciate, uh, some black top because five miles an hour on that, uh, where the culvert is, is a little bit slow for the white Dodge when I'm headed to work.
Now you're going to, now you're not going to White Hall anymore, huh Chuck? You're going to Greenwich. So, yeah, Keith had called me. I think he talked to Bob. Did he talk to you John?
He talked to me and I said, I said, fine.
Right, and we all agreed Chuck and so he caught three of us and, and that made, made good sense to me. Mobilization charges nowadays are ridiculous when you're talking about two hundred bucks an hour for a tractor trailer, so. Um.
Yeah, and you're looking at a tractor trailer trip for a grinder, a trail, a trip for a paver and a trip for rollers and you know, traffic control and everything included in there. It's, uh, if we just have to be there with our grader, I, I really don't, I really don't think we would have accomplished much by shopping, so.
No, so.
I don't know how the rest of the board, uh, this is Chuck, sorry Mike.
Now go ahead Chuck.
The, uh, the backhoe. I mean, the issue with the grader took two times. I mean, I thought Nortrax was a much better dealership than appears that they're treating Towne Apollo. But, uh, more freight charges both ways. Uh, and there's gonna be an additional charge. We all know that. Just seems like, uh, everything we do with them lately, we end up a little bit, uh, higher than we should be. End of my conversation.
I, I will agree wholeheartedly Chuck. I think it's, uh, you know, I actually have had that have had that discussion with them, so. Um, I was seriously disappointed when we ran that machine about three hours and we're right back where we were when we'd sent it over there a week before, so. It was, uh, and I've expressed that to them, but until they get into it, they won't make any commitment one way or another and, um. So we'll see. I, it's, it's gotta go back over there and we'll have to see what develops. We're, we're in bed with them right now anyway, so we gotta let them finish what they started, so. And I'm, other than Nortrax, we could go west instead of east, I guess, and try something different next time, but currently I'm seriously disappointed as well.
Well, I'm gonna tell you too that I'm extremely disappointed in, in the John Deere equipment as a whole. We have a loader at a five forty-four at work. It's got sixteen hundred hours on it and a turbocharger actuator setup. They did pay for a new turbocharger, but we still had over two thousand dollars to pay just in travel time for them to come and fix it. And it just, I'm just, I, I couldn't believe that that should go wrong in that kind of time and, and I, I know that that in a couple of years when that lease is due, he's gonna have to work super hard if he, if we want to see that color and that. And I feel the same way about the town.
Right, we've, uh, something's going on there.
They're getting cheap.
This is in, it's in recent history and as, as you know, you all are aware of, it's very expensive to repair anything now. I mean, it's, uh, you know, their, their service costs and travel time and everything else adds up considerably and we're in one respect, we're locked in because if they have to, you know, troubleshoot and hook up with a computer and stuff, their technology is not shared anywhere, so it's, uh,
Absolutely.
Um, my suspicion is they technicians aren't what they used to be either and perhaps when you just flash a code and dive on that particular issue, you miss some other things that may be going on and so you, you do half the job. You repair what the computer is telling you to fix, but they lacking the practical experience to assess the whole situation and look at it, so, um. And I mean, I think we had that issue with the grader and, um.
I talked to Craig about that too.
Yeah, exactly. Right. I think I, you know, you know exactly what I'm saying then Mike, you're, you know.
Absolutely.
You, you, you flash a code up there and it tells you that that's what it is because it's coming from a sensor, but there's a deeper rooted problem that you're completely overlooking. And, um, you know, the, the other critical picture there is that, you know, we're getting down to crunch time here and we need a machine and you know, we're, we're counting on their reputation to, uh, to keep us moving and it, it's not producing, so we definitely will rethink things when it comes time, but for the time being, I think we're, uh, we're into it there. We better stay there and get it addressed and taken care of and, um, we'll put Julie, the, the, you know, the pit bull lawyer on there and she can argue the price with them when we, when we get done, so.
I, I'm, I strongly agree with that. We're gonna have to go over that invoice with a fine tooth comb and, and we're gonna have to stay at them hard. So.
And it's
And the other thing on the list.
Uh, the other thing I have is I have some truck prices, but it's incomplete at this time, so I don't know if you want any report on that. I have a couple that didn't come in and I don't know why they didn't come in because they were all aware that it was tonight that we were, had told you some, some you know, some, we would release review them and have a discussion, but I'm, I don't have, uh, I don't have a, a complete list yet, so we might just better keep, uh, keep the other numbers not being public, so.
I feel that would be best. How do you think Chuck?
Um, like I said, there's four manufacturers that are in the business and we need four quotes.
Well, I have four quotes Chuck, but all four aren't, um, represented yet. So we'll wait.
Who do you have quotes from?
Who do I have them from?
Who do you have quotes from now Keith?
Just, just brands, just the brand, please.
I have, uh, International from Delores, Chevy from Ross and two Ford prices, one from Carmody as Ed suggested and one from G Stone and Middlebury. So I don't have a Dodge price yet. I'm supposed to have two coming, one from Middlebury and one from Stevens and Greenwich, so. Zepone can't sell us that big a truck.
Right, you're looking at a, what they consider a fifty-five hundred and eighteen thousand?
Right.
Approximately.
Nineteen five actually Mike, yep.
Okay.
So, uh, I, I don't know. The only, the only thing that I have got consistent feedback from some of them is, is that, uh, as far as ordering a truck, there's no guarantees on timelines because most of them quit production with the COVID issue. And, uh, so basically what they're dealing with is what is scattered around on, on the lots. And there'll be no more twenty twenties made and the next, when they start, uh, production again, there'll be twenty twenty ones and who knows when you'll get one. So that's not to say that they're not readily available, but if you have something real fussy about it's on or off a truck, you're, you're gonna may have to shop a little bit, so. I mean, color is one thing, you know? If, uh, if you've got a particular color you want, there may be one or there may not be, so. And that's pretty consistent across the board, other than with the International, I guess, so. Um, but there's plenty around right now, but they are selling and, you know, as they sell and, you know, that may be sales pitch too. You know how them salesmen are Chuck? They may tell you that whether it's a big, big issue or not, you know? But that's what they're all telling me is that there'll be no more twenty twenties made and when they go back into production, there'll be twenty twenty ones and depending on when they start cranking them out, what availability will be there, so.
Okay, well, your Dodge would be Foster. If you're going to Gardner's Ford. So Foster's, uh, that's where Castleton's truck just came from.
Yeah.
So it's Foster, it's G Stone, it's Ross and, uh, Delore.
Okay, so Keith, what did you have for problems with the, with our fifty-five hundred? What was the last issue I wasn't? I can't remember what the last issue was.
Brakes.
Okay.
So, I mean, we had to, that's not near as big an issue as we had last winter when we had to, you know, we uh, we replaced the turbo and did a couple of other things to it, from front end parts and things like that, but brakes are gonna start wearing on a new one as quick as you bring it home, so.
Okay. Anybody got anything else for Keith?
No, and, uh, the trucks, I would think you would want red. To, they would red trucks for the Towne Apollo.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thanks for checking Keith.
Anybody else have anything for Keith? Okay, thank you Keith. Did you, one thing Keith, did you happen to, did I share with you the, the proposal from Hole Tanner for the, the sludge bin or not?
Uh, I don't believe I've seen that Mike.
Okay, I'll, I'll get it out to you so you can look at it. When we come up under wastewater, we'll talk about it a little bit more.
Okay.
Is, is that next Kristen or is there somebody else in the middle?
No, so there's, next up is Emergency Management Director and Health Officer, so there's no reports on this time of the month, but Bob Marlino could not attend this evening, but asked if I could, um, provide an update from the health officer, so. From Bob, regarding twelve ninety-seven Vermont Route one forty-nine demolition, the homeowner was served with a notice of intent to issue a health order. The homeowner has ceased demolition and is now contracting with an asbestos inspector. Consequently, a health order is not necessary at this time. I will keep you posted as to the progress. Also, a rental housing code and fire marshal inspection was done on the twelve ninety-five Vermont Route one forty-nine building of the same homeowner. The deficiencies found must be corrected before any of the three apartments can be rented, submitted by Bob Marlino. And that is, that, that's all from that.
Okay.
And then next is the wastewater treatment facility.
Okay, so I shared with you that, um, proposal. I met with them down there and, and we looked at, you know, we talked about the facility and, and the benefits of having sludge storage and and the two plans show two different options. One of converting one of the existing septic tanks into a sludge storage tank and the other one would be constructing a new one. One of the problems with converting one of the existing tanks in is A, it's quite a ways below ground level so that it makes it much more difficult to pump it out and B, it's harder to get into there. You'd have to have a confined space type of deal to get in there to do a, a real good cleaning when you did pump it. So that, that would be an option, but the benefit would be in having an outdoor sludge storage, but it's another hundred thousand dollars more. For rough numbers, it was like two hundred thousand for, to convert it. And these are, these are expected prices. It hasn't gone to, uh, you know, there's not bids or anything like that or three hundred dollar, three hundred thousand to do an outside storage. And right now there's like a forty-five percent, um, match to the project. So we would only be paying the, you know, fifty-five percent of the project. Unless the state deemed that because we had enough violations, we could go in that high risk and that, that we really don't know right then and right now. And she said that's kind of a fine line because you know, you're you're right on the edge of, of having huge state fines and penalties for not compliance, but if, if the state deemed that we were right on that hairy edge, we could get as much as, I think she said seventy or seventy-five percent match. So it would be a big benefit to us, but we can't find out till we go the next couple of steps and get the project bid out. Um, there are funding available to cover this, um, this study that she just did and then we need to go for an RFQ, I think, is a request for qualifications. Is that correct Harry? You can just nod. Um, that, that would, uh, that would be a chance for everybody, all the engineering companies in the state that are qualified to bid on this job to, to form a list and, and then we would have to pick one of the, one of those. We don't, we don't have to pick anyone in particular, but we would have to pick one of them. The, to do the project would have to be one of the ones off the qualifying list and then the project would have to be bid out. Um, and it would have to, we'd have to pick one of the ones that qualified. Uh, and then if we, if we went that far and still decided that for whatever reason, we couldn't do the project. we couldn't do the project, we wouldn't have to pay any of this initial grant back. Um, she figures it would be like maybe another three thousand or so more to go to this next step and get the funding. And, and then we would, then we would have it all. We would know exactly what we'd have to spend and we could talk to the state to see exactly what, what we could get for payback. And, and they also, the, when they calculate the loan, they have a, a system where they evaluate the medium income of all the people that are on the system. And, and that controls a lot on, on the rates that the loan are and, and the amount of, of state funding we can get toward it too. So, you know, if you have a very low medium income average that's hooked up to the sewer, then it, then it's a beneficial thing to the town because we could get more money out of the state. Um, during the process that I talked to, you know, they, they, we talked about a lot of stuff in the hour and a half that I was down there. And so I don't, I don't recall everything to, to share with you as well. And I asked, I asked Jenny if she could, she could provide me something, but by the time I got an email out to her and she was hoping to have something that she could send me today, but it didn't, it didn't work out that way. But I, I wanted to, to, to lay that next step out in a way that we can all understand and, and what, the pros and cons of what can happen that if we choose to do nothing. And the biggest thing is that the, the existing system that we have is, is a, a very poor functioning system. And by getting this, the sludge out, what we're trying to do is recycle the sludge back through and keep getting it to break down, but it's, it's causing us trouble with the fresh. So the sludge needs to get separated out that comes out of the clarifiers. It, it, by putting it back in, it's kind of at a different level than now all the fresh coming in. So it, it, it's detrimental to the process from what, how I understand it. And the other thing is too, by putting a separate sludge facility in, we would have a, a de-watering system involved so that when, when it was time to pump the sludge, it would be strictly sludge and not sludge and water on the top that could go back through the system and these, the, the water could go back through, work through the system and eas- and easily be cleaned and, and exited and we wouldn't be paying the fifteen or seventeen cents a gallon to, to Rutland. So we would in essence be saving money because what we would be sending would be actual thick sludge and not, not a watered, watered down sludge. So this is as much as I can give you for right now, but I, I feel it's something we need to really focus on and, and keep, and keep investigating too. So as I get more information, I'll, I'll share it with the rest of you and anybody that has any questions can either, you know, get ahold of me, send me an email or something and I'll be glad to share anything I can or share with you contact information of, of the people that certainly could answer these questions for you, so. Anybody have any questions at this point?
Thank you, Mike, for doing that.
I, I, this, the state we're in, I really don't want to spend more money on that sewer plant, but we also can't afford to, uh, have a, a non-functioning sewer plant that we're, um, constantly violating the discharge rules and, and that turns into state, uh, fines and et cetera and stuff like that. And it, it just would just keep compounding down a very bad road. So I think, I, I, I hope that we can find a reasonable solution that will, that will correct the operation of this and, uh, and something that's, that we can fit into the, to our, our plan without causing any undue burden on the users and, and even the town, uh, townspeople and all that. So, thank you. And if there's no questions. Frank, go ahead.
Ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, it's wide, it's wide open. And I was wondering, because a lot of the residents in town don't really know what goes in and all the work that Mike does and all the contingencies involved. Would it be advisable to have a public meeting at the firehouse so that interested citizens could go there and have questions answered? Do you think that would help with some of the emotion around any increases?
I mean, it's an option, but what I think I'd like to, uh, I'd like to see, let's do a little bit more work and see if we can pull this project off. And in order to have a, a, a good public meeting, I would need to have, um, this engineer, Jenny come down, somebody that could answer the questions correctly because I'm sure some of the questions that the people would be answering me, I would not, I would not be able to give them a, a good enough answer to suit me. So I would rather have, um, so if we get our ducks in a row in order to, uh, and then decide that we want to do this job, I would certainly be willing to, uh, to have an informational meeting so that everybody that was interested and had questions could come and, and understand better why we need to do what we need to do and why we need to spend this money to get us in the right, on the right track.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, Kristen?
So next, this is Kristen. We have older unfinished business, so nothing officially on the agenda, but a couple of things that have come up. Um, first, the last meeting we inquired, Harry and I specifically spoke to open meeting law as it stands currently. Um, so I reached out to VLCT who informed, uh, informed me that the governor has extended the state of emergency due to COVID, um, through July fifteenth. But in that email, uh, the individual that responded said that we should anticipate online virtual meetings until at least the middle of July. Um, but I think that they've found that these are seemingly working pretty well. And a lot, I think of small government and small groups that are meeting are finding that virtual has been safe and effective. So, um, just an update that we're continuing to work virtually moving for, from now moving forward until we hear otherwise.
Kristen, who did you speak to there?
Oh, I forwarded you.
Was it Susan? Or you did?
I did. I sent it, um, it was like, the, let's see, it was, I sent the email to Sue Sanning, um, and she didn't respond, but somebody.
Okay.
From her office responded.
That's pretty much what Susan told me.
Yeah, so I'm sure they had the same, it was somebody from her office and I sent it to her, um, and I got a response from, from someone else, so. I can look up specifically who it was if you'd like, but.
No.
Um, and then additionally, so, um, last meeting, Tom Collard was appointed the local primary representative for the Rutland Regional Planning Commission as well as the Transportation Alternatives Council. And I reached out to Ed Bove and Mary Kay Scazza up there. Um, I hope I'm pronouncing her name remotely correctly, but she, they sent me back today. They'd like for the town to fill out the same form that we filled out in years past indicating who our primary and alternative, uh, secondary represent, representatives are. So I was going to bring that form down tomorrow for Bob to sign. Um, but I know that there's just a primary. I, right at this point in time, there is no secondary representative. That's that. And then the last one, um, so I know John wanted to speak to the open, upcoming opening position for the web coordinator as well as the eBlast. Um, Elizabeth sent me a, sent it to myself and John today and Mike, I forwarded it to you. It was an overview, a more specific overview of the work she's been doing as well as a breakdown of what that position costs roughly. Um, so you both have that and I will send it along to the rest of the board as well. And additionally, I received a message today from Sarah Young indicating, who's our current community connector with the library, indicating that she is incredibly interested in that position. Um, she asked if I had time for a call today, which I did not, but I recommended that she send an email to Mike, you and John, our chair and vice chair, um, expressing her interest and that we could go from there. Um, but.
What, what position was that, Kristen?
It's Elizabeth Gibson's position. She is, um, retiring, so it's e, uh, newsletter and, I said eBlast, uh, newsletter and web court, website maintenance. So yes, that is what I had for that, John. I don't know if you had more.
Yeah, so I had, I had emailed her because on our last connector meeting, I had forgotten to tell her of Elizabeth's, uh, desire to step down. And I wanted her to know that, not personally. I didn't, uh, do it to, it's her to reply, but she did reply and is very interested. Uh, I don't know how her position is, uh, once the grant runs out and with the library and financial stress as everyone is, uh, uh, I, I don't know. But anyway, I think she's very well qualified. She's a very nice lady. She's doing a good job with this connector position and I, I think she'd be good for the job.
Well, that's good. Two, two votes in favor already. That's great.
So, um, my question to follow up on that, sorry Frank, just my, gonna finish this thought, but I'm, if she reaches out and would like to have a phone call with me, I'm just not sure, um, how you guys want to handle this kind of from like the personnel perspective. I just, I can certainly start a conversation, but I feel probably ultimately it would require maybe some sort of executive session. I also don't know, like you said, John, what her position at the library looks like. I mean, just the logistics of all of that.
Well, that was, I was just mentioning that, just wondering her motives for, for being interested.
Yeah.
Also, uh, rest to her that we had, uh, thought about, uh, to get the word out, uh, and she could help get the word out without targeting her personally. Um, but at the, telling her that we had, uh, uh, of consolidating some of these part-time jobs and we were willing to package, um, several of them together, whether we could find someone with the variety of skills, all those different requirements required. Um, but, uh, I emailed her the job description that Elizabeth came up with today and, uh, um, we can get back to her and, and, and she can express an interest toward us and, uh, I think Elizabeth can hang on for another two weeks and, uh, although being a grandparent is getting tough on her, I think. But, uh, if that, okay, if that sounds good.
My, um, this is Kristen again. My only question about it is just wondering if, and I'm not, sorry, I don't already know this, but so is Elizabeth a town employee and is this a town position?
It sounds like a little bit of a gray area to me. Oh, there we go. Julie's on. Go ahead, Julie.
She's not an employee.
Okay.
She, um, would be considered a subcontractor and so she is issued a ten ninety-nine, um, but she is not, um, she's not paid on payroll.
Okay.
Uh, Sarah currently is.
Okay.
But the library covers, um, the grant covers her payroll and the library came up with out of their own budget, the difference that would cover her payroll taxes.
Okay. Because I think from a, a legal, a legal standpoint, if it were a position of the town, we would have to open it up for applicants and it would need to be an equal opportunity, um, for anybody that wanted to apply. I, I think I, that's what I would want to get some clarification on, but if it's a position that we just are searching for and hiring subcontractor, I don't think we have to go through that same process, but that is something that I would be happy to send an email to the VLCT lawyers just to make sure if you, if you want.
That would be very good. Thank you.
If she's going to be subcontractor, she would essentially have to hang a shingle. So you can't just hire someone and say, you're subcontracting and I don't have to pay your payroll taxes. They have to have an existing kind of business and work for other people. It can't be, they work for the town of Pola and we say, you don't work for us.
Right.
And isn't it, isn't it the case that, uh, if we're gonna hire a contractor, we have to, we have to put it out to, uh, several other people? Or we have to open it up to the field and compare, you know, as, as a, as a town, we'd have to compare prices?
Yeah, so that's, um, I, I'm also in an email to VLCT tomorrow and just ask for some clarification on this position and just what we need to do as a town to properly make sure we're keeping our lowercase Js dotted, you know?
Perfect.
What, what do we do in the meantime with, uh, a number of things that are on that website that are incorrect and have to be corrected? We work with, still work with Elizabeth on that through the time being?
I.
Cause a lot of, there's a lot of misinformation, particularly in terms of the planning commission and stuff.
So I've been still communicating with Elizabeth and I have not heard officially that she is washed your hands of things. Uh, I can also email her and just let her know that we are actively working on this and, you know, cause she did say that she would like to step down, but is also not going to leave. I don't think she's gonna leave the town high and dry either, but.
Good.
Um, so yeah, I would, I'm going to go out ahead and assume, which we all know what that can do, but I'm going to assume that I think it's safe to still contact her.
Okay.
Can I bring up one, can I bring up one other item of old business?
Sure.
Uh, has to do with the open position for the planning commission. We left it, I think, at the last meeting that we were gonna advertise for it. Uh, how were we going to get that done? I, I was wondering, did I drop the ball or was I supposed to, was I supposed to contact somebody? Or what are you gonna do with?
Usually we put it on Elizabeth and then we advertise it in our, in our paper, our normal, uh, papers, Lakes Region Free Press.
Lakes Region Free Press, yeah.
Yeah, and that's.
So who was, who was gonna speak to Elizabeth? Was it gonna be me or you?
I think it was, I thought it was going to be you.
I'm sorry. I'll do that tomorrow.
My, I'm sorry as well. Sorry. Um, and then, um, Harry, Deb is responsible or Deb, uh, reaches out to the papers.
Yes. Oh, Deb does, okay. Um, and one other thing, Julie was going, was, uh, was this working with, with, um, Jonas, uh, about the intern assistant position? Is there anything further with that yet? Julie?
This is Julie. Uh, so Jonas mentioned that he was going to write up a job description. And that's the last I heard.
Okay.
I've not seen a job description.
That was a while ago, I think. So, okay. I'll talk to him. Thank you.
Yep.
This, this is Frank. Could I interject?
Go ahead, Frank.
At the last planning commission meeting, the topic of the bulletin board and availability of permit applications for, for public access was brought up. And Jonas was saying, oh, you could scan them in and we could put it on the website and computerize it all. That gets very complicated because then you're looking at searches and all sorts of stuff. Maybe it's just better that it, a sign goes on the door that, that the bulletin board with permanent applications and all that stuff is available by appointment per COVID nineteen, uh, restrictions. And that, that would be a simple way around that maybe.
Okay, good idea. Thank you. Anything else, Kristen? Are we at the end of the?
Well, we are almost at the end of the page. That was all for older unfinished. Um, new business is up next, if anybody. I don't have anything to report for new, but.
Yes, John has, uh, apparently the roof is leaking at the. Yes. John has, uh, apparently the roof is leaking at the, from the, of the ramp at the library. And there's a slate or two missing. And I wondered who, it's a small job, does not need scaffolding. A ladder would be sufficient. Uh, who do I contact? Uh, I haven't hired anybody for slate work in Polat.
Uh, Chuck here. You're, uh, in the past, we've always had Doran, uh, out of Castleton. That's, uh, that's done work for us on, uh, on the town building.
Okay. I asked Eddie, he dealt with them last time and I think.
I think so.
Okay.
John, this is Bob. Um, we also have Jeff Kelly. He's a town resident right there in North Polat. And if it's a small project, I'm sure he would, he would help out also.
Okay. Good idea. Thanks for mentioning that, Bob. I know Jeff.
He's good with, with slate, Bob?
Very good.
Okay. Good. That's good to know. So that gives you enough options for that, John?
Yes, thank you. Just what I wanted.
Good. Okay.
Um, and that brings us to public comment.
Okay.
Unless anybody else had new business.
Any new business? Nope. Public comment? All right. Chuck, you wanted to do the duty?
Oh yeah. That sounds like a wonderful deal. How about, uh, we, uh, close, uh, or adjourn or leave the building?
Do you have a second on that? Yeah. All right. Did you see that? John, John blinked his eyes. So that's as good as a second to me, Kristen.
I think, I think Chuck's, uh, someone in Chuck's house seconded it for us too.
Perfect. All right. All in favor? Chuck?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks everyone for joining us tonight. Have a great evening.